Welcome everyone. Welcome everyone to the December 12th Planning Commission Meeting. First would be a roll call. Gesmi here. Johnson.
Here.
Hema.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Everyone's here. Is there approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Montgomery, second by Johnson to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can we have approval of the minutes from August 15th and November 14th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Motion by Montgomery, second by Hema to approve the minutes of August 15th and November 14th. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Next item on the agenda is public input. There is none. Mark was gonna, are you gonna talk on the... Public hearing, yeah, okay. So...
So you want to open the public hearing?
I want to talk about the section into my block properties. Whenever that's...
That would be, yeah.
Okay, that would be during the public hearing.
Okay, that's now?
Okay, no.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna dispense with public input. The next thing on the agenda is the public hearing. So, the public hearing is gonna talk about rezoning preliminary plat for Greg Jablonski on Towering Bluffs. Public hearing is scheduled to request by Greg Jablonski for preliminary plat to rezone for Towering Bluffs. Zoning is currently R2, single-family residential district, and RE, residential estate district. The PIDs for the Towering Buff preliminary plat are 525, 4,014, 525, 4,010, 525, 4,016, 525, 4,013, and 525, 4,015. Diane, do you want to open this up?
Yes, thank you. We're proposing a zone of planned unit development zoning for this development due to the varying sizes and styles of lots and homes that will be encompassed throughout. This plat will be developed in two phases. Phase one will be 22 lots, and phase two will be 52 lots. The total site area is 118.5 acres. These are the zoning issues that need to be discussed with the planning commission in regards to the Towering Bluffs preliminary plat. We are proposing the zone of planned unit development zoning, which is a mixed use of planned unit development that may include land uses from a variety of zoning districts and must utilize a PUD zoning district. This PUD zoning may include an ask for side setbacks and a sidewalk-trail option condition. And we're gonna discuss those next. We're gonna start with the setbacks. Five-foot side setbacks are being proposed. The minimum side setbacks in most residential districts are currently 10 feet, with the exception of five feet in a garage side only when accommodating an attached garage. Staff's gonna recommend the five-foot setbacks to be approved as a PUD condition. Also proposed are sidewalks on one side only of residential streets in certain designated areas intermixed with trails and other designated areas. Bill will detail those for us after my report. But, to expand on that, code 15110930 sidewalks. Calls for concrete sidewalks four inches thick and five feet wide in most residential areas. In addition, it asks that sidewalks be installed prior to the installation of a tubus wear course, and that the developer notify all lot purchasers of sidewalk construction plans. The mix of proposed trails would eventually extend throughout the development and potentially connect to adjacent existing trails to provide safer walking routes with more flexibility for biking, et cetera. The city administrator is recommending approval of the proposed sidewalk and trail plan combination. And lastly, we have an apartment complex that is being proposed in the Towering Bluffs development. Due to being in the early preliminary stages of planning, details on the design are very limited. To date, we're gonna propose an R4 high-density residential district planned unit development process for this apartment complex. Where this could change depending, but right now, it is the use that would fit, seems to fit the best. Full details will be provided for the apartment complex when the final plat is ready for planning commission and city council consideration. That will be a second meeting, so you will have a second opportunity to comment on these plans. And Bill?
All right, I'm going to connect my laptops. I think some of the things that I have will be easier to be shown, so I'm gonna move to I think I have to shut this one off. There we go. You guys wanted to see a picture of my family, right? Now, the interesting part is...
Is that the runoff pond?
Yes. By the way, all the water's gonna be crystal clear. So, that's interesting.
That's Lake Michigan, that was Dora County, so, good, good one, Matt, so.
Okay, so the engineering review. So, there's an engineering review letter in your packet. Typically, when we have engineering review letters, we don't go through all the items. But obviously, if somebody wanted to ask a question, definitely be prepared to do that. So, what I wanted to highlight were a couple of the items here. So, first one I'm gonna refer to is item number two. And that is, due to the size of this development, there are some mandatory thresholds that the state dictates, that you have to do a formal environmental assessment process. So the formal environmental assessment was completed way back in 2003, and that still stands. So that's still, that's still relevant, and that's still good. The one thing that staff does is we check to see if something significantly changes or a reason that that process should be repeated. And the answer to that is no. So I want to highlight that, so that, that full environmental assessment worksheet document, we do have on file, so if someone would ask for that, we have completed that process. Okay, on item number four, we also, in addition to city approval, we also have county approval. Because we are plating adjacent to County Road 25, Goodhue County also has approval. Now, what they would have approval to would be the access onto their county road, and any drainage that drains in there right away. So we have had, county engineer's been copying what we've done, and Mr. Jablonski and his engineer either have or will be reaching out to the county as well. Okay? Item number five, wanted to call that one out, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip back and forth a little bit, so. What we're talking about is the water tower site. So I'm just zooming in on their plan. This is a city-owned property right here. There's the water tower in the middle. The property line for the water tower is where my hand there is going. And the dark lines, dark lines signify grading. So they're gonna be grading onto the city's site, basically, to blend that into that hill, so they're gonna be changing that slope. So I wanted to make you aware of that. That would be a condition of their approval. But city staff is recommending that the developer be allowed to grade onto the water tower site. Okay? Again, we're gonna jump around a little bit. So as Diane mentioned, item number seven concerns sidewalks. As Diane mentioned, your sidewalk ordinance does say that you have to have sidewalks on one side of all streets. The sidewalk ordinance does not cover some things that we sometimes will see. Do cul-de-sacs, you know, need to have sidewalks? Or not? Some cities do not have them on cul-de-sacs. Your ordinance does not, I think actually it's just blanket, you have them everywhere. It does not address if you have trails, or if you have connecting to other neighborhoods. We have a few unique circumstances here, so Diane and Neil and I met with Greg and his engineer, and I'm gonna try to get to that page here, we'll maybe use this one. So, meaning that in this subdivision, we have this apartment, but we also have limestone up over here to the northwest. You know, really, we think it would benefit the city to have a trail connection to limestone, to the apartments. Well, that's not covered, you know, under your ordinance. So by your ordinance, they only have to have it on streets. And this is a, you know, private drive going in here. Well, we think there's some positivity that we should connect that. So, so what we, what we're proposing, or what the developer proposed, and we think is reasonable, ultimately, this is really a Neil, you know, item to recommend, so Neil's recommending that, though, I'll be honest, I, I think it's a reasonable item, and that is that northwest up here, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit off the plat, so the end of limestone to the apartment building to this cul-de-sac. So if you can follow my line, my hand, there's gonna be a sidewalk. By the way, the sidewalk may not go here. We just said limestone, apartments, cul-de-sac. So whether they go this way and down, or round through, then a sidewalk would follow this cul-de-sac here on one side, then the main thoroughfare here, this main road, and then down on Decorah here at the bottom, this is Decorah, there would be a trail on the east side. So one of the things we talked about is we said, you know, one of the things that would really be a benefit is if we had a trail from County Road 25 all the way to Highway 19, so to the school. And, you know, that would be, you know, going above and beyond the sidewalk. So we thought, well, it would seem to me that that would be a reasonable compromise that the developer put this trail in on the east side, and then continued it through their development. One side of Street B, which it'll have a new, it'll have a different name in the final plat, and then connecting the apartment complex and limestone. So that's the sidewalk path. Hopefully, that's not too confusing there. So in essence, what would happen is, there would be no sidewalk on this short cul-de-sac, and there'd be no sidewalk on this longer cul-de-sac. Now, one of the things we did talk about, just kind of fill you in a little more, we talked about, okay, well, these roads are kind of steep, our sidewalks, you know, good on these lots. The developer had made the, you know, discussions with us, is that, you know, we're trying to make lots more affordable, you know, sidewalk costs are a big item. Typically, we don't look at costs, you know, when we look at, okay, is it a good idea, connectivity, et cetera? But he did make that point, and obviously, Mr. Jablonski can make his own points, but I'm just kind of relaying what, what we had heard in our, you know, our discussions at the staff level, so. So that's really what I wanted to highlight on item number seven, and particularly that trail going through. You know, granted, it'll take a long time for that to happen, and there will be actually other property owners involved, you know, to get all the way to the, to the road, but, I'm sorry, all the way to 19 in the north end, but we really think that's, that's a good thing for the city long-term. Oops. Okay, a couple other items I wanted to highlight, is I want to highlight item 11. One of the things that we talked about is the two roads on the west side, limestone and High Point. So both those roads, when the EAW was submitted in 2003 and previous plans of this preliminary plat, do not have those roads being connected. Okay? So those roads have been shown, you know, being cul-de-sac, or I'm sorry, nothing on the end. So particularly on limestone, there's a temporary turnaround that's kind of put in there now that's off the property, actually goes on the property owner's property. And we, we think from the staff level that really there needs to be a better solution. And what Neil and I have talked about, we've talked with Dan a little bit, is there really should be, a cul-de-sac's gonna be hard to build there, just because of the grades, you know, on that south one, boy, there's a big steep hill there and it drops off. But we should at least give the city the ability to, probably not put a cul-de-sac, at least put what we call a hammerhead, or a T, you know, T-turn. So what Mr. Jablonski has, you know, agreed to, and by the way, everything when I say agree, I mean subject to, you know, city council approval, is that he would provide a 100 by 100-foot square at the end of both of these roads. So in the future, if the city desired, you know, because that really would probably fall on the city, to put some kind of turnaround in, we'd at least have the land to do that. So we thought that was a fair compromise for Mr. Jablonski. Okay? And last one, kind of a longer one here. There's an existing road on the northern side of the property, the mayor lives up there as well. The future of Spring Garden Road, if anybody, you know, I think someone, Diane called it a goat trail in our, in our, in our meeting. But this isn't so much Mr. Jablonski's problem, but, you know, in future phases, you know, he'll be plating up against that. We really need to kind of think through, okay, what is the future of that road? Does it stay? Do we just get rid of it, you know, formally, get rid of it? You know, Mr. Althoff, who lives there, you know, really, that's part of his access, so we really should keep that open until at least this development's built, because we think it's tore up. But once this development's built, and, and there's access provided, you know, to the southeast, really, that road could go away. But again, that's not necessarily Mr. Jablonski's issue, but it's a bigger city issue, and it does, it will impact how we would plat that next phase. So again, we wanted to point that out, and then make sure the planning commission and council knew, at least at the staff level, we were, we were considering that and contemplating, you know, what's, what's the best answer, so. Those were the main engineering items, so ultimately, the recommendation is to approve this, and then with conditional upon these items being addressed in the final plat, and then, you know, there'll be other additional engineering items as well that, that'll be taken care of. So, I'll pause there, and I think actually, unless there's any questions for me on what this was, I'll sit down, and then I can bring these maps up if people have comments. I'm not sure if my mouse, I might leave this just, what I might do is, I'll point this, I think I can run this from my spot over there. See how, how far this reaches, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, if there's no other comments from Diane, I'm gonna open the public hearing. So, as of right now, I'm gonna open the public hearing to anybody that would wish to speak to this preliminary plat for the Towering Bluffs, is that right? Towering Bluffs Edition?
Can I have the overhead turned back on? Sorry to disturb your laptop.
No, that's all right.
But I think what I'm gonna say makes more sense if we put a, another map on it here, bigger than yours.
It'll come back, it made a beep.
Okay. Great. I'm Mark Mason. I live at 128 Grove Street North in Cannon Falls, which is the area right up behind the cemetery, and also referred to as the Manley Edition, which was developed in 1986. My wife and I were some of the first purchasers of the property up there, so we've been up there for almost 35 years now. We built our house there. And I'm here tonight not to say I don't want to have a housing development or anything like that basically up behind my house, because I really do. I think that it's great, it's gonna be good for Cannon Falls to get some more buildable lots, et cetera, et cetera. So that's not what I'm here to talk about. What I'm here to talk about tonight is briefly, and I'm not gonna go into any details unless you folks have questions that you want to ask, is we have a drainage problem coming from the property that's in question, and particularly the section that ends in 016. That abuts my, our property completely. Now, I was hoping that this would show up a little bit better, but essentially, this is my house right here. This is Grove Street that comes in. The cemetery's over here, and of course, this is the property that we're talking about. So as you can see, I share two common borders, and then I have three neighbor lots that contain, that also share this property. And we are the three or the four lots, because I own both, both of the 128 and the 124. We've had this problem for the 35 years, and the city has stepped in and tried to do some patching and so on and so forth to stop the problem, but we're not 100% successful. And so I looked, took a look at this when I first got, got the letter on it that it was happening, and said, this is a great opportunity for the city to work with the developer to get this drainage thing straightened out. A simple, and I'm not a civil engineer, but I do understand gravity, and basically, what's happening right now is from approximately this point here, right now in the, in the farmland, it's a very high point. It's about 200, 250 feet, yards, I guess, basically from the property line here, which is grass, and then of course, all the trees and so forth. Right now, what happens is this high spot drains to the north, towards our property. Can we do something to turn that drainage to the south? You know, whether it's a valley in here that goes into the culvert, the storms, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not the expert in that area. I'm just saying, can we fix it? Put it in writing to, you know, to the planning commission, let's please put it in writing, let's please get, have the city council put it in writing, so that there's no misunderstandings, that this is what we want to have done. Because if it doesn't happen, five years from now, or 10 years from now, when this all comes together, the city's gonna be paying more money to fix something that we could fix now. So that's where I stand simply in saying, can we do something? Will you folks please take that into consideration? And will you please try to put it in some kind of verbiage in the agreement, so that everybody understands what's going on? Okay? Any questions for me on the details of all this? You all shook your head like you know what's been going on up there, you know?
We've talked about this before, I believe.
Yeah, we have.
If I, if I may, so I have been tasked by the city administrator, actually, when I say I, Dan Howard and I have been tasked with coming up with a proposed solution. So we've had a few meetings here. To answer the first question, can it, the drainage be directed to the south? The answer would be no, but we're looking at options to either divert to the west through city-owned property, or recently owned city property, or to the east. So, the, our direction from Neil is to come up with something over the winter. Now, ultimately, I don't know if that'll be constructed next year or not, that's not, we're not to that point yet. But, but we are working on a solution.
Okay, I mean, I'm just thinking that if this is like most developments, there's gonna be a lot of dirt moved around up there before this is done. So, you know, we can dig, dig drainage ditches, we can, you know, put, you know, whatever you guys want to do, but make it work, please.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
We, we addressed that during one of these discussions, I believe, quite a while ago, that once we start working on this development, everything will be a little easier to work with, and hopefully to fix that problem. Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna keep looking at that.
Where did you think you, where else did you think you'd direct them? To the...
To the east.
To the east? Yeah, the east makes more sense. Isn't it geographically, there's...
Yeah, the challenge, the challenge with, well, to the east is the city does not own all the property. To the west, we do, so that's what we're working through right now, so.
Okay, is there, is there anybody else wishing to address the planning commission? Second call, anybody wishing to address the planning commission? Third and final call, is there anybody wishing to address the planning commission on this issue? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing. So, commission, what are your comments? I think one of my comments is, and one that I addressed with the city administrator and, and one of the property owners on the end of the street up on, on the, where that, where that hammer is, or whatever, we're gonna move that further east and get it off of your property, which is, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's your concern.
Where is that?
The Valley View Road.
It'd be the end of Valley View.
Okay, I'm with you.
Don owns the last house on the right, on the...
Yeah. The Valley View.
Yeah. Right before the drop-off.
Okay, this is John's here. Where, from where, from where now?
Go up 25.
Yeah.
It'd be this, this here, right...
25's here.
Right here.
Right here.
Yeah.
Stone Road, she's right here.
At her property, here, the two lots right here.
Right.
And right on her property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we already addressed that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. For sure.
So, how are we, how is the Elthoff lot accessing a road?
So, Elthoff lot there, you'll see on the screen there is this right here, so that accesses Spring Garden Road. So, what would happen is potentially, this would just turn into a driveway that would come through the development, and then this portion of the road could go away. But, so then...
It's actually not part.
On this map, I don't see it.
Okay.
It's off, it's off the map.
Or it's not.
Well, here's Elthoff's lot right here, but I don't see a road.
No.
Yeah, so Elthoff's is up here.
He's talking about...
Yeah. I don't see a road to their place.
It's right here. They come up Spring Garden Road.
Well, I know where the current road is in proposed development, I'm not seeing.
So, this right here is, this is the right-of-way. That's a 66-foot right-of-way right there.
Yeah.
So, that would, that is what leads to Elthoff's house.
That's a road then?
Correct. It is currently correct. And the future of that is what, you know, I'd covered under item 13, what do we do there?
Is there another property, there's another property that's up there that's being...
There is.
Resided in?
Yeah.
So, it would be the same thing with the driveway?
Well, the, my understanding from Mr. Jablonsky is that that property would eventually be, in the next phase, it would be tore down.
That's all.
So.
Okay.
I'll tell you his name when it comes to me.
Gotcha.
And so, you really don't think the existing limestone road with that map can be continued on to, that's not feasible?
Now, we're across, if I could, County 25 from what was trouble. Trouble to the south.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. And, and so, we've, I think the first, last time we talked about this a few years ago, that was still pretty fresh in our minds. So, we've done our due diligence on the type of soil we're dealing with this time?
So, so actually, I maybe shouldn't have glossed over item 14 from my review letter, and if it's on the screen there. So, a geotechnical report, so typically, a geotechnical report would not be turned in with the preliminary, it'd be turned in with the final. So, that would evaluate the soil, soil conditions, et cetera. So, we are expecting that with the final plat submittal.
With the final plat?
Correct.
Okay. So, we are...
We're, it's, yeah, it's on our mind, but this would generally be one step before that, so.
Yeah.
And Mr. Jablonsky is aware of that, and his engineer is aware of that, correct?
Because that was a great place if you wanted to open a pottery, but that's about all. The drainage issue up there that we talked about, to Grove Street and also up in that corner, you have, if you go east, you're going right down Main, right past my house. And I know that we've had basically rivers come down there, big flooding problems for some of the people back in that area. So, that's going to, when you get down to that, that's going to be pretty difficult to find a place where you're not going to cause a problem for the city.
Yeah, and if I may, so, so this, this phase of the plat, everything would drain to Cairo 25, it's not till future phases, so really, yeah, so really, it's kind of divided up into three areas. It will be, one will go, drainage will go to the northwest. Actually, maybe I can pull Google Earth up here while we're talking, that might help.
Northwest.
Northwest up here, so as the drainage comes, this is a big ditch right here.
Yeah.
Northwest.
That's a big ditch.
Yep. Northeast through here, and northeast kind of comes through the cemetery and through the mall hill property. And then, the very north part just kind of sheet drains down the hill.
Yep.
So, what we've talked about is, well, how do we address that, you know? And how do we address, well, first off, there's the statutory requirement they have to meet, and that is the amount of runoff leaving the site after the development has to be less than or equal to before.
Yeah.
So, so they're going to satisfy that, will, as part of our review. But then, there's also the practical reality of, well, we don't have some good drainage now going through these, you know, here and here. How are we going to improve that?
Yeah. It's all limestone underneath, so how are you going to stop it?
Yeah, so one of the things we've talked about, particularly, well, both northeast and northwest, is do we pipe it down the hill? I think the people on Grove Street would tell you that, well, running it down the hill doesn't work, you know? And so, I think we do not want to repeat that, so.
So, how about changing the, the, well, what you've got is a natural slope. Can't you re-engineer that whole hillside?
Nope. The water, the water's going to go...
I know, yeah, but that's what I mean, but, but...
Can we, can we, like...
Can you dike it in a direct?
Yeah, you can, you can do some things, like here, I'm just pointing here to the northwest, you know, can you do some things down the hillside?
Earthen, earthen dikes or something like that.
Yeah, but you're kind of limited.
I know, that's, but you're facing that problem, you're going to have flooding on possibly two sides of, both sides of that hill if you get, which you've seen already.
Right. Now, from the developer's perspective, and that is, okay, what are you required to do? You're required to keep it the same or better. Now, from the city's perspective, we want better, but that means if we want better, then we are going to be a partner in that discussion. So, when I say partner, it means we're going to be contributing dollars as well. And if I was the developer, I'd say, well, this, like this northwest drainage one here is on city property. Well, it, that's part of the city's responsibility.
Yeah.
So.
Did we discuss retaining pond, or has that been done before, and it just builds?
Yeah, there's a pond right here. So, actually, the plan from 1994 was for the city to run a pipe up the hill to that pond. That never occurred, and none of the current staff were around then to know why. So, we don't know why.
I don't think I was around even.
Steve, we tell, Steve was here, so.
Well, that was a long time ago. I might have been around.
Bruce might have been, so.
I can't remember that far back.
Yeah. So, but we're, but we're aware there are some, well, there are drainage issues, you know, whenever you're on top of a hill, there always is, so.
But obviously, this is just a preliminary plat, so trying to take care of that issue is something that we're going to lots of opportunities in the future.
And that'll be in the...
What's your experience with more concrete and more, and more tarred surfaces with water?
It runs off faster, so.
It does, yeah.
So, so the overall for this preliminary plat, there are three storage ponds and infiltration basins that are proposed. So, and what we look at, and I'm sorry if we're getting into the weeds a little too much, I know Matt has another appointment, but what we look at is, we need to convey the 10-year storm, okay? So, think of that as five inches of rain in 24 hours. We need to convey it, I mean, put it in a pipe, run it into a pond, treat the water, and then when we get 100-year storm, so think that seven, eight inches of rain in a day, you know, that we need to be able to, we're going to overflow ponds, we have to have a path for the water to overflow safely out of the subdivision without going into homes. So, that concept, for example, on Grove Street, well, actually, there wasn't a development, you know, but that was partially followed through. So, that's what we're working on today on the Grove Street solution, so.
So, will we have any problems with drainage then on the Cannon Falls side of this, up by, just the other side of Elthoff's there, to the, to the east of Elthoff property, you got a pretty good gully going running down?
Yeah, and I think it'd be fair to say we have drainage problems there now.
Yes.
So, the development here will, in theory, lessen it because they'll be providing ponding and storage that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Yep, and then it'll be up to the city then to help, you know, come up with a solution for the existing problem.
Okay.
And Mr. Jablonsky is, these, our discussions have been positive with him towards that, so.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-13 Towering Bluffs preliminary plats for the multiple PIDs.
I'm going to second. Is there any further discussion concerning the preliminary plat?
Roll call on that one, because they do require that one. Roll call.
Okay. No further discussion, we will vote. Do it right here.